Order at seven oh five P M. You like to call the role?
Yeah. Joe Abdella.
Here.
Don Boniudo. Greg Kava.
Here.
Victoria Thalen. Stephanie Kolnick, I'm here. Angela Macchia Rulo. Alex McNotten.
Here.
Justin Ongley. Jennifer Podin. Jane Sargent, is she on Zoom?
She's on the top of the video. There she is.
Pete Tagley. Mary Weber. All here.
All right. We have a quorum. Is there any public comment on matters on the agenda tonight? Any public comment? On agenda matters? Going once, twice, three times, that's it. Okay, consent agenda, there are minutes of the Board of Ed meeting of January twenty second, twenty twenty four. Would anyone like to take those off of the consent agenda for the purpose of discussing them? Or making modifications or proposing? Hearing nothing, those minutes will be deemed adopted. I'm gonna pass on my board chairs report tonight because we have a somewhat long agenda, so I'm gonna move on to the superintendent.
Okay, I'll start with. The personnel. So appointments, we have Chris Coe, who's a long term special ed sub teacher at Chapag. And Lisa Holmes, who will be a long term special ed substitute teacher. And we have a leave of absence, Sarah Burns, special ed teacher at Chapag. And in the resignations, Devin McCullough, literacy tutor at Booth Free School, and that's not effective until February sixth. Or was February sixth. Field trip notifications, we have Melissa Penfield Park in Plattsville, New York on April eighth, that's grades nine through twelve. And I think you have that in your materials, that's a. Part of the astronomy club will be gazing at stars and he actually has some alternatives to that, just in case the skies aren't clear in that area, that he has two alternative sites for that trip. And then, of course, our sixth grade trip to the Bronx Zoo. On June fifth. And and then I will be bringing forward our finalist for the Director of Teaching, Learning and Assessment to the Board on February twenty sixth. And that's once all references have been checked and our candidate has had ample time to notify the current district. Typically admin contracts require a minimum of a thirty day notice, which is typical. Just prior to that board meeting, I will make sure that you all receive the applicants credentials. And resumes, so you can review that in advance. What I'm passing out here. Just so you know, came in the form of brochures, we just didn't have enough for you all, so I wanted to make sure that you received it. This, these are copies of the CAPS blueprint. I'm gonna pass it around, which I think is good to just to review. It continues to show that our organization, the superintendent's organization advocates for. Educational recommendations with our governor, legislator and state board, such as changes to the timeline and mandates around the science of reading. Indoor air quality, special education funding and a lot more. It also addresses those areas in which progress has been made in Connecticut already through this. By providing further resources such as in teacher shortages, mental health, teachers retirement. And some of the education mandates. That are upon us, they've developed an education mandates review task force, and that's through CAE with recommendations regarding some of those burdensome mandates and possible repeal. So it's always a good thing when we advocate for those. So just wanted you to have it. You can review it at your leisure.
Very much.
You're welcome. We're gonna hear two programs this evening that we're hoping to pilot partnering with Ed Advance is one to support. Exciting opportunities for our high school students related to college readiness and early credits. But also in the program, we're also really thrilled about primary partners. And this will bring element elementary, fourth and fifth graders together from across town boundaries for STEM. And the arts innovative learning opportunities, and I just wanted. To take a minute to preface this tonight because these represent such close alignment with innovation. And value which is highlighted in our strategic plan. So even kind of launching a lot of that early on, so we're really excited. That's all I have.
Alex.
Oh, we had an F and O meeting this morning and I'll save the bulk of that for. That well, the bulk of my information for that, but there are two things I want to point out from the minutes you just approved. One of them says. Let me find where I said it. Yes, as of right now. Thirteen point six eight percent of our budget is left unspent as opposed to this time same time last year of twenty seven point eight three percent. That was last month. I have an update. We had some good, a good month or two. We are now have fourteen point four five left. Compared to seventeen last year. So we are now within two and a half percent of where we were last year. Now, we still have to make sure we don't go over budget, but it's it looks a lot better than. The other thing I mentioned is they were talking, the state was talking about breaking out the funding for AgSTEM. And where the towns would be paying less and the state would be paying more. Our governor has decided to remove that provision. And things are pretty much staying the same. We are going to be getting a little less money from the state because there's a pool there. And by the time they divide it up among all the schools, I can't remember Nicole, how much less are we getting?
We went from five thousand two hundred dollars to four thousand nine ninety six.
Yeah.
A little more than two hundred bucks.
Yeah, so it's not necessarily good news, but it is tank. And. I think that's it for the treasurer's report. Unless somebody. The number, the the numbers that Nicole came up with this year, this this month. Are pretty much the the culprits of the same culprits propane. Electricity has gone up some. But there are no sort of surprises of anything in the spreadsheet that jumps out at you saying, oh, my goodness, we're way over budgeted this item. And that is it for me as treasurer.
Committee reports curriculum and educational program.
So our, excuse me, our next meeting is February twenty sixth, so I really don't have too much to report. I do know that. We are very excited to work with. The new director when they come on board.
Okay. Ed Advance, Joe.
We are Board of, Ed Advance Board of Directors met February first during this meeting, we officially appointed Jonathan Costa as our Executive Director effective July first of this year. We also received an update on the College and Career Acceleration Program. And how things are progressing with that, it should be up and running by September this year. There's currently seven school districts, including Region twelve, that will be participating. The four pathways are manufacturing, engineering, early education, public safety and healthcare. Don Shells will be covering many of the many of the points in this in his presentation tonight. Also, we received an update on the grocery project, which is. In the addition stages, so there's an attachment to the existing building now. When that structure is ready and done, which it's weather tight at the moment. It will become the Early Learning Center in Torrington. That's what I have for tonight.
We'll go on to finance and operations.
Okay, we just had our meeting this morning. And a couple of things have come up. One, we had we had encumbered funds to do. The first phase of the solar, which we are not going to be doing now. But but Nicole has found out that we're allowed to take those funds and use them for other capital items, so that we're gonna be transferring. A little over three hundred and fifty thousand, which was going to go to the solar to get some items done that need to get done. Install a new dishwasher, the cafeteria or install a dishwasher, there is no dishwasher currently. Do an HVAC assessment, which is required by the state. Repair some paving over at Washington Primary. And window security, this is going to be done in the form of film that's put over the windows. Which does not make them not chatter proof. But you're gonna have to really work at getting through this this window now, it's not like you can throw a rock, the window's gonna shatter and you can go through. Also, the switches for the tech department are going to be replaced. Do we need a motion for this, Nicole? Yeah, so we need an emotion to approve the reapportion of funds. And these funds have to be spent by the end of the school year or or they get returned to the town. So basically, we're taking three hundred and fifty three thousand seventy nine dollars and eighty two cents. And using three hundred and fifty two thousand six hundred and forty five dollars on these other capital projects. I'll need a motion to transfer those funds over to do that. Oh, what? Oh, you want to wait for the action items that okay.
Well, we could advance them.
As long as I've described what it is. Yeah.
So the question is, I want to get. Consider appropriate reappropriation of the budget fund. Okay, is there a motion?
Oh, yeah, I think Stephanie made a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
We're looking, no, it we're look, yeah, you need to put your mic. We need. We're looking, we're not, we're not so sure we're gonna use.
Right, but it doesn't mean that the solar is off.
Oh, no, it just means it's late.
Got it, just wanted to make sure that.
Any questions? Okay, any other? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? So we've covered that, I'm sorry.
Okay, I've got, and I've got more. The transportation, the bus, the bus contract, I just want to go over that quickly. There was some language in it, Nicole is trying to keep the language as close to the last contract as possible, just changing dates and numbers. She has returned it to them, we do not have that, so we have tabled that at the F and O level. Just so you're aware of it, that the bus company is at their own expense. Is putting in a five thousand gallon diesel tank on their property. Which will mean that we don't have to have. A truck come with with diesel every. Time to fill up all our buses, they we can fill them up ourselves. Anyway, so that's been tabled till next meeting.
That will save some significant money.
Yeah. Yeah. Let me see here. The elementary non recurring fund balance, do we need to talk about that? Okay, let's talk about that. See what else there is. I think that's about it. Oh, no, we've got a capital. If originally, we were gonna have four discussions with each of the three towns. And the first discussion was about the facilities. What Nicole has done in conjunction with Don, they've gotten together. And they've put together a five year plan. Now, this is only. Guidelines, but it gives us an idea of what kind of money we're going to spend in the next five years, not. Renovating the schools to new, this is just that can that we've been kicking down the road for so long. And it's there's significant numbers, we're talking about a total of about just under twenty five million dollars over five years. Where there are going to be two bonding issues. That'll cover about twenty two twenty million of this. Some will be coming from the two percent fund. But the two percent fund will be will be adding into it, so it really doesn't affect the the balance that radically. And some will be coming from the general fund. And. Anyway, that's we're working on that over at F and O. And I think that is it. Nicole, have I forgotten anything? That's it. Thank goodness for Nicole. Yeah.
There were two things, one was at Washington Primary and one was at Booth. That if they break. We're not going to be able to fix them for a significant amount of time. So just, I don't know, it just seems so weird to me to be spending all this money for that, but that's just me.
One of those things, Mary, was the electrical panel, and that's on that first, that's in the first year, and I think at Washington. What was it saying with Washington? I have to look at it again, but I like in, I don't have what we had. I thought so too, I think it was septic. And that is also on there, I think in the first year. So those like major priority issues, Nicole and Don and Alex worked on some of those, but just just so we know that those things that we talked about, the the high priority issues, I think that's how that's. I don't want to speak for you, but they were prioritized by your kind of those. With that in mind. Unless you have something to say.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, very good. Policy committee, we met tonight, we approved for transmission to the board, and our next meeting will take up two policies that related to talented and gifted students and. Taking challenging curriculum courses. These policies were the same, they hadn't changed except for certain aspects changed in the laws, legal change, and these are very minor, they'll be put in the force. Negotiations. We have negotiations that should start next month, if I'm not mistaken, with our nurses, unions representing our nurses, our custodians, and our non certified and paraprofessionals. Those three unions will be starting negotiations. They'll be hearing more about that. Strategic long range planning, yes?
We have not. Met and actually Lori, we we're not meeting for quite a while, so when I looked at the calendar, we're looking at April. So I'd like to talk with you so that we can have a little bit more of. A regular meeting because I feel like now, especially now that we've got the strategic plan in place. I feel like we need to work on that. Okay.
Okay. We have no old business, we've already dealt with the action items, so we'll go on to new business and updates, we'll start with the S V S Ed Advance dual enrollment, Dr. Shells.
Hello, everyone, there is a slideshow in your packet, I don't think it's gonna be broadcast on this screen tonight, but I can still talk about it. And a few of you, you know, I shared this with Ms. Bliven the other day, a few of you contacted me, I think for. For access, editing access, and I granted that, I don't know why that happened, I'm sorry, if you couldn't see it, I'll try to make sure that you get a copy that you can get to next time, okay? But so thanks for listening, and as Mr. Abdella said, we're investigating a really interesting possibility with Ed Advance. And the idea is to be able to make sure that we maximize pathways forward and opportunities for all our students. And dual enrollment is a really neat way to do that for all different kinds of kids. Now, the idea of dual enrollment is simply that while a student is enrolled here at Chapag, working towards a Chapag diploma. It can also be earning credit towards some other credential, and the most conventional way this happens, that you're most probably familiar with, is something like an advanced placement course. Or an E C E, early college experience course through University of Connecticut, where students take a course here and they earn college credit for it. Now, this is a little bit more than that. Under this rubric with Ed Advance. A student, when it's brought to scale, and we're gonna begin in a pilot phase, they'll describe in a minute. But when it's brought to scale, a student can be working towards a Chapag diploma here and get. A certificate in one of several impressive areas, right now, we're talking about a manufacturing, engineering pathway, and there will be others. And when it comes to scale, and if students are in the pipeline and they start doing it when they're freshmen. They can graduate from Chapag with our diploma and an associate's degree. In in this case, manufacturing, engineering, or again, several other pathways. That can be used for a lot of different things, for some kids, they will parlay it into acceptance at a four year college in engineering or some related field. For other students, they will parlay it into to enter the workforce with a credential that's very marketable and very portable. So for all our kids, and given their varied interests they have about next steps, we think this is a great thing to give them a leg up and competition. And to advance their education. So the way it would look is, or Ed Advance is building this too, and we're going slow. First of all, the purposes of it are first, number one, to provide more access to careers in college for students, that's our primary goal. But we also want to be good citizens, and in Connecticut, over the next decade, it's projected that we're gonna have hundreds of thousands of shortages in these areas that we need to fill. And it's good for us to partner with the state to position ourselves for kids who want to do that, to be able to do that and hopefully stay here. And and follow their their dreams. So they're partnered with the state in order to make this happen, and this is cost neutral for us, that there's no transportation fee, there's no tuition fee. Ed Advance is shouldering all that, and again, in partnership with the state. And in the fall, we hope to solicit interest from between three to six students to start on a pilot basis. Who want to take, it would begin with a course in computer aided design. And mechanical computer aided design, and those students would then graduate with a certificate in that in CAD that they could use, that could be marketable in the field. Again, now, as this goes forward, and if it grows, which we hope and expect it will. Students would start earlier on, and in this pathway, they could graduate with a full blown associate's degree in technology engineering. Now, there are several other pathways that we hope to grow in the near future, one is in education. And in that pathway, a student could end up ultimately with an associate's degree in early childhood development. There is an allied health services pathway with an associate's degree that could lead into those health fields and one in public safety. So the the manufacturing engineering makes the most sense for us right now. And so how would it look, and then I'll just close with some of the logistics, okay, and then I'll take questions if you have any. Students would take six of their core requirement courses here at Chapag. And then there'd be two periods where they're in route to and receiving instruction at Ed Advance in Torrington, where all the equipment and instruction is. And they so on Mondays and Thursdays, they would start the day here, take core courses here, and then they would go to Ed Advance, and the rest of the time, they would be here in their core. Courses. So we've been investigating this all year, we've had a lot of great meetings with Ed Advance, Mr. Abdella, it sounds like they're talking about it too, and they're excited. Other districts are jumping on board. Under Dr. Rodriguez leadership, we've been testing the water, we think it's gonna be good for our kids. We wanted to let you know, and as we continue to investigate this, we're gonna have two reps from Ed Advance who are gonna come in and. Give the board a deep, deep dive in the end of March about the nature of their program. Also, I do have some brochures for you here, which of course I left in my office, but I'll get after this and hand out to the board, okay? So I thank you for your time, and are there any questions for me?
You you mentioned in your report, I think, that I did, thank you for sending out the version we could open. You mentioned that this was something that was gonna take place during the day, so it would not interfere with the students' pursuit of extracurricular activities after school activities, is that correct?
That's right, and that was really important to us. Two of the axioms we laid down with Ed Advance is number one, we have to have, any kid who wants it has to be able to do it. And it shouldn't interfere with after school activities or other requirements, and they're very, very flexible, they want to make this happen, and you know, they're willing to work with us, and. We sort of pressed every possible scenario, troubleshoot, what could go wrong, and we have an assurance that. You know, they can get the kids here shortly before lunch, even give them a box lunch on the bus and maximize time and have them back here by two twenty five. If they're in after school activities. And again, this would be something, this would be for students who want it and choose it, who are motivated to do this, not something we would, you know, force on anybody.
One other question, which which university would be issuing the associate's degrees?
Ed Advance is.
And the certificates?
Yeah, Ed Advance is partnered with the Connecticut State University system, so it would be the same as getting an associate's degree from any one of the.
Oh.
State universities, and I believe they're directly, I think it's gonna come out under the moniker of Central Connecticut State, but but that's the vehicle for it. And those credits would transfer to many other places, and they have records of all kinds of great results happening, some students have taken that associate's and applied successfully. To the engineering school at places like Cornell and Caltech, and others have taken it and gotten jobs in the industry right now. Depending upon their preference, we're excited about it.
Eighteen year olds with college degrees, well done.
Yeah, yeah, and think of the tuition money you can save if you come out of high school with an associate's degree, that's half your college tuition paid, so there's that too. Yes.
I just want to comment because my oldest son did something very similar in Danbury High School. And actually graduated with his associates before he graduated from high school. So it is, it's remarkable, it wasn't too much of a strain on him throughout his high school career, and. It was. It was, it was just very, very, a very positive experience for for he and his peers. So it is, it's a wonderful program and I highly recommend it.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that you had a good experience, and it's true, what we hear from Ed Advance is that the way they schedule things, it's not very invasive or intrusive, it really works with the rest of the student's high school career. And the further we go into this, the more kinds of opportunities I think we might see, like for example. When you bring it to scale, if you have enough students interested, you can get some of your in house teachers certified. To teach some of these courses here on campus, now that would be a game changer if we had, let's say, a cohort of fifteen or twenty kids doing this in one of these or more of these pathways. And they could get the coursework here the way they do with E C E or A P, that's something that could be. Possible also. Yes.
My husband happens to be an engineer, and he's been working in the industry for a long time, he's worked at two different companies in the last ten years in in Danbury, and they're both. Just dying for new engineers, smart kids right out of college to be able to feed into the program. So that this way that the older people can, the older engineers can help the younger ones, and then they can become good, but there's. Several different places in Connecticut that are really hurting for for engineers, and they're looking forward to programs like this, that's fabulous.
Absolutely, and it's that need that has made this somewhat of an imperative with the state and with Ed Advance, because some of the hard questions we ask them, for example, were. How can this not cost us anything? How can this come to be? By the way, I wasn't born asking questions like that, I've studied under the tutelage of Ms. Grant for the past three years. How to ask some of those questions, and. And it's been a great tutelage, it's been very fruitful for them. And they said, hey, the state is serious about this because of what Ms. Weber's talking about, that they can't fill these jobs, and. We don't want this to become part of the expression like the dying state, so I feel good about this, not only for our kids, but for what we can do for the for the local economy. Yeah.
Yeah, this is the same reason they fund Ag signs, because a lot of those kids stay in Connecticut, have great careers in Connecticut, pay taxes in Connecticut. And it's good for the state, so that's truly an amazing thing, yeah, Mary.
Right. Yes.
And and there are a lot of companies that. And, and there are a lot of companies that work with the government, government agencies, like the Navy and the, and the Army and the Air Force. And they want to keep those companies here in Connecticut and, and working with the government agencies.
Yes.
Yeah, it sounds really great and promising, but I'm just wondering how we're not the only school system who is going to be involved in this, in these programs. And how Ed Advance is going to handle enrollment and all the speeding schools.
Sure. Well, they're going slowly. And that's why the ambition in any one school is to start with somewhere between like two and six kids. And that question was posed, another question I asked across the table from them. Do you have the resources and the bandwidth to make this work? And they do along any access you want to ask. They've got the bus drivers already on staff. They've got the teachers lined up. They've got the facilities and the equipment. Now, they can't over, they can't overcrowd the program. So I don't think any school is going to be offering 50 candidates right away. But they have the, the resources they need, you know, to make this work. And, you know, we said to them, if it sounds too good to be true, maybe it is. And we've really looked at it nine ways from Sundays. For us to pilot this and grow in a reasonable way, we think is sustainable. And so do, so do they.
Other questions? Great job.
Thank you for your consideration.
Joe, I think you should go back to Ed Advance and tell them how excited we are about this and thank them for, for this initiative. Please. All right. Now we'll move on to primary partners, Mr. Frost.
Okay, well, I'm glad to be able to continue, I think, along the theme of innovation, although a, a different kind. And what I'm doing now is simply reporting on the tentative, or at least initial progress of a collaboration among folks at our central office, our elementary schools and here at Chapag. And in short, we see a few opportunities that may be possible. And the opportunities are first, for our elementary students to access Chapag resources while accelerating and learning about science, technology, engineering and math topics, as well as a variety of arts topics. We think that we have resources through it at Chapag that are used by our staff and students, but could be further used by our elementary students too. And the other opportunity that we see is the chance for our elementary students to spend more time with kids from other elementary schools. We believe, I think collectively, the Emilys and Dr. Rodriguez and other folks who've had a little bit of a say in, in this discussion, we believe that it's just simply good for children to meet, spend time with as wide a variety of, of peers as possible. So that's one of the things we're aiming at here. So the, the basic idea for this nascent program, Primary Partners, is that we will bring elementary students to Chapag, specifically fourth and fifth graders. And that's important, I think, because we have a tendency sometimes, certainly here at Chapag, and I think maybe in the elementary schools, to foster single grade relationships. And so the idea of bringing together fourth and fifth graders is to foster cross-grade relationships. And if we do that, if we bring fourth and fifth graders to Chapag and we have a theme of content that they're going to access in a given year, then, for example, next year, we believe that we can get fourth and fifth graders here, learning about exciting STEM topics that are connected with our planetarium and our astronomy program, that are connected with horticulture and our greenhouse, that are connected with our science labs, maybe, maybe our small animal lab or our barn for large animal experiences. And we can get fourth and fifth graders here four times. And they can have these experiences that are led and include Chapag staff and Chapag students who will, of course, benefit from working with, spending time with these younger students. They'll have four experiences. They come up here at, we think, 9:30. They have an hour and a half experience, maybe in the greenhouse. Then they all go to lunch together. They play together. They get back on their buses. They go back to Booth and Burnham and, and Washington Primary School. And while they may have bumped into someone at soccer or at a park in the summer, they will have a chance to see these peers more regularly, to establish and strengthen relationships. And at the same time, they're in the planetarium and they're seeing the planetarium work. And they're hearing about the retrograde movement of Mercury. Maybe that's not the first lesson, I guess. And, and, and it's, the idea is that it's a two-year cycle. Because if we have fourth and fifth graders together, then those fourth graders will have experienced the horticulture activity in the first year. And so what do we do in the second year? Well, we, we could change the horticulture activity. We could do a different science activity. But these, we can get better at these programs if we give ourselves the opportunity to hone and refine. And so the idea is that the second year is an arts experience. And that may be visual arts, that may be music, that may be theater, that may be any, any number of things, maybe poetry. And so in that second year, the fourth graders, who are now fifth graders, are with the former third graders, who are now fourth graders, a new set of peers, a new set of cross-grade relationships. And they can spend time. And of course, the best part is that there's a pool party at the end. Everybody goes swimming on the last day and has a great time, we think. Which is another way of saying that we want students to access the resources here at Chapag and the pool and the greenhouse and the barn and the planetarium are among those resources. But the, the best and biggest resource, I, I think, is peers and relationships and the big time. So we're working on this. We do think there is, is some limited funding needs for that. At the very least, there's transportation. But we do think that because of the flexibility and creativity of our elementary principals and staffs, really, that we're going to be able to make this happen. And that the young people will have a good time, learn, benefit, be exposed to some, some big ideas and some, some big high school and middle school students and staff too. Thanks. I'm happy to take questions also.
I just wanted to reiterate, at a P T O, I go to the P T O meetings in Bridgewater. And this is one of the things they were asking for, more group activities between the schools. And with the assets we've got up here with the planetarium, et cetera, what a better place would there be to bring kids, younger kids? And the fifth years, it also gives them a little peek at what next year is going to be like. They, oh, it's not as scary as I thought it was going to be up there, you know? They're, they're just people too.
Yeah, I think that's another benefit, building that bridge. Yes.
I want to say too, just as an elementary school parent who gets P T O meetings all the time, I think one of the big things that parents have been looking for and have kind of been missing in the last few years post pandemic is opportunities for kind of cross culture. And I love the way you started off with innovation. Because I think that's one of the things we love to see in our programming. It's out of the box thinking and innovation. And, you know, what can we do with the resources that we currently have to take advantage of that? And something about those fourth and fifth graders, who eventually become sixth, seventh and eighth graders, who can kind of give that back. They'll remember that they did it in fourth and fifth grade and kind of take on that leadership role as well. So I think it extends beyond elementary school. It hits you in middle school again, and you see it from a different perspective. So I love the evolution of that. And I like, you know, that, that kind of forward thinking of how do we make that endemic into the culture of, you know, appreciating what we have and celebrating and giving it back and learning. And I think it's a great start. I love the idea.
Yes, thank you. I do agree. There's a few different nice things coming together.
Mike, let me ask a quick question. And that is something that, touching on what Stephanie said. When you bring these kids up here, it's fourth and fifth graders. But do you think that might have a positive impact on what we've seen over the years, which has been sort of a fall off in performance, you know, that when you get to sixth grade, it's a big transition? And will this help to blunt that transition year, to be able to help the kids achieve higher academic standings as a result of the familiarity with the high school program and the building and the people? And that kind of thing, you think that might help?
You know, I, I don't really foresee that being a, a big benefit. But at the same time, I don't think it can hurt, right? If their connections are stronger with their peers and the transition to being a sixth grader is all the much smoother because they have friends at Booth and at all the schools, then I think that can only help. And, you know, they'll, they'll be familiar with the staff, they'll be familiar with the facility. We have tried in recent years, especially with the fifth graders, probably for many years. But as far as I'm aware, in recent years, to do a good job of getting the fifth graders up here. So the fifth graders have been coming up here. One of the big additions here is, is frequency, is the intentional programming and also the fourth grader. So, yeah, I, I think that there could be a benefit, especially if those fourth graders know some fifth graders. And then when they become sixth graders, they know some seventh graders. As Stephanie's saying, I think there can, can be some of that benefit. It certainly wasn't the primary thing. But, you know, being happy and being comfortable just lets everything else flow. And if they're happy and they're comfortable and they transition smoothly, then they can learn. So maybe you're on to something.
Well, I was also thinking that there would probably be, as, as we improve the alignment of the curriculum and the making sure that the, that the curriculum that's in the elementary school is something that's moving the curriculum up here. It seems that you, if you could use this piece to solve the social issue and we can use the curricular piece to solve those areas, this could be a drastic improvement, which could increase. And that's an improvement that's going to cascade through the middle and high school into the, into all the years they're here. If, if those, if we're able to get those improvements made.
For sure. And, and some of the work that will have to happen here is curricular communication. Those fourth and fifth grade teachers are going to talk to those sixth grade, seventh grade high school teachers. And so we will bump into some better coordination and articulation simply by planning this program.
Yeah, collaboration is really critical. John?
Yeah, that was my impression, you know, especially on the elementary level. They're going to be exposed to some things here that they don't get, you know, in the primary school. So it's got to boost academic achievement, I was in some form. But, um, so four sessions, what is the duration or length of, of one session?
I think, I, I think it's about two to two and a half hours is what we're planning, with the final session being longer because of the giant pool party. No, 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 I think. Unless you're a certified lawyer.
That was a hard in fact.
Are you hoping to start this in the fall?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just going to add something too. When you were talking about the connection and building bridges, the high school will be starting a portrait of a graduate work, which is really a K-12 look forward and look backward at how we prepare students from kindergarten on up. And this is just, even though it's a small start, it really is something that would play well into Portrait of a Graduate Work, which will start. And that's part of the strategic plan as well.
Okay. Thank you very much for your questions and support.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Okay. One, one second. A, a short. Do, do I have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing unaffiliated salaries, discuss communications from legal counsel and the superintendent salary contract? There a second? Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining? All right, we are into executive session.